Remote via Zoom webinar, December the 7th, 2020. Important notice regarding the December 7th Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order Number 29-20 dated March the 17th, 2020. By order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County directing all individuals living in the counter to shelter at their place of residence, the governor has allowed local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconference and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body or state body to avoid public gatherings and has suspended all contrary provisions of the Brown Act. This meeting tonight will be via video conference only and can be watched in real time on Melbury Community Television cable channel 27 or on www.mctv.tv. The public cannot come to the Millbrae Council Chamber to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. To maximize time for public comment, members of the public are encouraged to provide comments by joining the Planning Commission meeting via Zoom or web. Visit HTTPS dash slash slash forward slash zoom.us forward slash comma select join a meeting and enter the meeting ID number 83973506769. Please use the raised hand feature to request to speak. For dial in comments, please call 1-669-900-9128 and enter the ID meeting number 83973506769 to speak. All public comments are subject to a three-minute timeframe unless otherwise determined by the Planning Commission Chair. At this point, I would like to call the, to order the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting of December 7th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we are on to business.
Roll call?
Yes.
Chairman Quigg?
Present.
Commissioner Joe?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fang?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Present.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you very much. Next item is the agenda review. Are there any comments about agenda? Saying that, the next item is staff updates. I do not believe there are any.
There, one moment, please, Chair Quigg. I'd like to introduce City Manager Tom Williams. And he'd like to introduce.
Yeah, thank you, Director. Good evening, Chair Quigg, members of the Planning Commissions. Nice to see you this evening. Tom Williams, City Manager here at the City of Millbrae. As you know, due to the coronavirus and some decreases of revenue, I've been managing the city and keeping a balanced budget through attrition. And Key Lim had stepped into the role of Community Development Director for an interim basis. So I'd like to recognize Key's great work and thank him and his staff for pulling more than what is a normal load for him and getting us through, you know, a trying time economically and fiscally for the city. But with the retirement of Angela Lewis, I think you all remember Angela. It allowed me to fill the Community Development Director position and continue to manage the city, you know, effectively with our priorities. So I am very pleased beyond belief to introduce Darcy Smith, our new Community Development Director. She's somebody of extraordinary talent and experience. She's been in the Bay Area for more than 15 years as a professional planner. Most recently, she was the Community Development Director in the City of San Bruno. Prior to that, she was a principal planner for close to a little over, what, 14 years, 13 years, Darcy, for the City of San Mateo and had worked and led many well-known projects, most notably the redevelopment of Bay Meadows. She's a graduate of Stanford University. She has her master's in city planning from San Jose State. She is an AICP certified planner. I wanted to take the opportunity to welcome Darcy to the team and somebody that really this city, we should be proud to have her with her skill set and experience to come on board and to help us through many critical projects that we have in front of us, both long-range planning as well as current development. So welcome, Darcy, to the team and welcome Planning Commission to Darcy. And you're in great hands, exceptional hands, so glad to have her on board.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here and to serve you and help with all the important planning projects that come before you. And I guess just I just wanted to make sure you knew, I am local. I don't live in town, but my sister lives in the Pinderah Project and I have other relatives who live in town too. But I'm, I'm local. I live close enough to bike to work, so that's what I aspire to do when it gets a little bit warmer. But I live just down the street and I'm just have been on the peninsula, as Tom said, since actually 1994. So I've seen the change and seen the evolution of the area. And you should all be just very, very proud that you have such an amazing small-town city with so much charm and warmth and community. So I'm just honored to be a part of that. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome, Darcy.
Well, I hope to connect to all of you. I wish I could welcome you down to City Hall to meet you in person, but I think I'll be talking with our councilmember, Lex Fang, tomorrow. And I'm, I'm happy to chat with you anytime you want to pick up the phone and hope to welcome you back to City Hall in person next year.
Thank you very much and it's very nice to meet you, even though it's not in person, but that day will come soon, I am sure.
All right, Chair, thank you. I am going to log off. Have a great meeting and if it's between watching the Planning Commission on MCTV or the 49er game, I'm going to watch MCTV.
I know you're a big fan of us, Tom.
Get the recorder.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome aboard, Darcy, and keep up the great work, Planning Commission. You did a phenomenal job. Nice to see you, everyone.
Have a nice evening to both of you.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Okay, next item after staff number five is the minutes. And it looks like we have quite a few of them here. So we will start with the minute of 8:17:20 and this is a resubmit. Do we have any comments on the minutes of 8:17?
Chair Quigg, I do.
Yes.
Jean, I'm overall okay with it. I know we want to trim everything down. I just have one question on page two. The commission comments and questions, the second one, I wasn't, I don't know what that means. So should code be noted for percentage of specific usage? A building, though each project is different, that, that's the only one that I was kind of like, can't. I have kind of a guess on it, but it wasn't very clear and I'm not sure if it needs to be in there or I think.
I can remove it if you think it's unnecessary. That'll be fine.
I think it's probably fine to remove it, but I don't know if that was a comment that was important to keep in. But from my, it wasn't. The second one, should code be noted for percentage of specific usage of building? I think we decided that wasn't, or we didn't really address it.
I can remove that and we can go forward.
If I do, yeah, if that's, if the other commissioners are okay with that.
But I think, Jean, you need to slow down a little bit. What specific section are you referring to?
On the 8:17 minutes for the commission comments and questions? The second line.
Should code be noted?
Yes, that one.
We'll change it to what?
Deleted.
We're just going to remove it.
Okay. We know. Okay, while you're at it, there's that third arrow. There's a typo there, C Fang noted, should be A Fang noted.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I thought that was just meant to be Commissioner Fang this way.
Oh, actually, you are right. Commissioner Joe. That's out, yeah, sorry.
Just because I thought, I thought my twin brother came up and. So, yeah, if you could spell that out, Commissioner Fang, that would.
Yeah, no problem.
That's not a problem at all.
Because we refer to each other on our own.
I thought it was a word, outline correction or auto correction. I would like to see one other edits for 8A. 8A, this third to last sentence after public hearing. It says amendment to the table 5.1 blah, blah, blah to allow conditional use permit biotech, scientific labs, tech biotech, product assembly, tech biotech, component manufacturing uses in the TOD overlays portion of South Melbury Avenue public hearing. I would recommend adding along with other specified uses. The way it reads here, it sounds like we're just zoning this exclusively for biotech. I don't think that would be harmful to just add that clarification.
I can do that. What I usually do is I just copy it from the agenda and place it in there, but I will add that comment.
Are there any other questions?
Through the chair, I just had a clarification. Commissioner Wong, can you please clarify what, what that change was so that we can accurately?
Under the.
Yes, under public hearing 8A, third to last sentence after public hearing in parentheses, add along with other specified uses.
No problem.
So we're just adding that amendment. It's not replacing any of the other specified uses, so just afraid someone might read this and say, oh, we're zoning only for biotech in that spot.
So the, the other specified uses are not changing in the TOD? You just wanted to specify that there are uses in, in the TOD that are, that are allowed.
Correct.
But they're not being changed, okay.
So do we need to make that clarification or, I think, based on what you said, Mr. Monta? It might be fine like this.
Yeah, I think this, the, the description of the, of this item is to allow biotech uses because they were not originally allowed in the domestic SP. This is to allow that. We won't be changing any of the other uses, so any, any conditionally used, conditionally approved uses or permitted uses will remain.
Yeah, that's what I remembered, that we were only dealing with the bio check.
Yeah, so I think that's probably okay, just to, just to leave it.
Leave it as is?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only changes would be to delete.
One line on page two.
Yes, there was one, yeah. And you can, maybe when you type it over, put Commissioner Fang rather than C.
Since I'm there. No problem.
If there's no other corrections or do we have a motion to approve with?
I motion to approve the minutes for August 17th, 2020.
Corrected, yes.
Has corrected.
I second that.
Can we have roll call, please?
I'm sorry, was there a second on that?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Is the verbal, Commissioner Fang?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe? Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
That's five to zero to approve. Oh, sorry, Commissioner, Chair Quigg?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I usually say your name first, that's why.
But you went backwards.
That's five to zero to approve the minutes with the change, this slight changes.
The next minutes are minutes of September the 9th, 2020. Are there any questions? Changes or a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes for September 9th.
Second.
Vote, please.
Just a moment.
Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fang?
My.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
That's five to zero to approve the minutes for September 9th.
The next minutes are for Monday, October the 5th. And that's it.
I wasn't present, so I will just abstain.
Oh, yeah, you were absent.
Move to approve.
We have rule of minute. Vote, Cam.
Was there a second?
I do.
Oh, Fang, I'm sorry, thank you. Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Davis? I mean, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fang?
My.
Commissioner Wong?
Agreed, yes.
Thank you. That's four to zero and Commissioner Joe abstained.
Moving right along, we are looking at the minutes of 10:19:20.
One correction edits on 10, commission comments. The C is appearing again, Commissioner Wong, C Wong.
I am going to not use that C ever again. Which page is that, do you see?
One correction, Bernadette?
On which page, I see it.
On page two.
Oh, isn't on page two as well?
It should be Caltrans, not Caltrain.
Oh, wait.
Where do you, oh, there it is.
And then one small typo after before as well on page two. Right where near the top of the page, Commissioner, comments and questions, the due should be a D U E instead of deal. Just a small.
I'm feeling that was a spell check.
Yeah, because I know. I move to approve those minutes, these minutes as well. With the corrections.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Second? Never vote, please. Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fang?
My.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
That's five zero to approve the minutes for October 19th. And I will make those corrections.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, the next item on the agenda is public communication. This is the time when someone wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. Do you have anybody on the phone or on?
Just a moment. Do you have? Nobody is, anybody have their hand raised in my, to speak? There are no hands raised for public comments at this time.
Okay, then we're moving on to the consent calendar. We don't have any items on the consent calendar this evening. Therefore, the next is number eight and that's public hearings. And the public hearing this evening is for 604 Santa Teresa Way. And that is a design review permit to allow a first story additional and the construction of a new second story to an existing single-story single-family residence in a single-family residential R1 zone. And is Mr. Rivera available to present the project?
Yes, let me just share the screen real quick, just give me one second. Is it showing full screen for you guys or is it showing?
I see a full screen.
Full screen?
With participants on the side.
Right, perfect. So thank you, Chair Quigg. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Chair Quigg. Item before you tonight is for a design review permit at 604 Santa Teresa. Um, the subject that is, or the applicant is requesting a design review permit to allow for a first story addition remodel and then a new second story to an existing single-family residence in the R1 zone. Here's just a map showing the location of the house, the project site. It's in the Cappuccino neighborhood. You'll see it here with the red dot and it's just across the street from Cappuccino High School. A bit of background information, it's in Zone 1 or R1, which is the single-family residential zone. The lot is on a corner with Park Boulevard and Santa Teresa Way. And it's a 4,922 square feet lot. Existing house measures 1,120 square feet. Part of the square footage is for a covered porch. The, the living area itself is about 1,598, so 1,598 square feet. So the proposal is for a 284 square foot remodel in addition in the first story. And then a new second story that measures 743 square feet. And here's just a picture of the existing single family or single-story, single-family home. Here's a proposed, here's a rendering of the proposed house. And here's the existing site plan. You'll see it's a corner lot on the corner there, Park Boulevard and Santa Teresa Way. I want to note that the setback here in the rear is not met, but there's no work that's being proposed there. And here's the cover, cover course that I, I mentioned. Otherwise, it meets all other setback requirements. And it meets square footage and lot coverage development standards. Here's the proposed site plan, like I mentioned again, like I mentioned just now. Here in the rear, there's the, the non-conforming part of the house, which doesn't need to require a 10-foot setback, but there's no work that's being proposed there. This kind of hashed area here, that's the new second story that's being proposed. It's all, all second story setbacks and, and the addition here, that's the area that if you go back, it would have been the covered porch. They're proposing to make that enclosed living space and then having a bit more of an addition on the first story as well. But, yeah, it meets development standards in terms of lot coverage, square footage and both first story for the most part. And then the second story setbacks are all met. Here's the existing floor plan. So it includes three bedrooms, dining room, kitchen, living room, the bathrooms, and then this attached to car garage here. Here's the proposed first story plan. So you'll see that this area that used to be the porch is now a living room, dining room. That's being extended from where it currently is. There's also a bedroom that was bedroom, I believe, number two here. That's being demolished and then it's, it's all going to be more living space. And the two-car garage is not, not being touched at all, so that stays compliant. And then here's the proposed second story floor plan. It includes three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and then a walk-in closet as well. And then I'll just go through the elevations real quick. These are going to be the existing elevations. This is the front, so this will be fronting Park Boulevard. The house here, it's a single-story house and then it measures around just over 16 feet. This is the rear elevation, existing. Then existing interior side elevation. And then the existing exterior side elevation. So this would be the one that's fronting Santa Teresa Way itself. So moving on to the proposed elevations, here's the front elevation. Like I mentioned, it's a new second story, so, so the height of the house, of course, increases from what used to be around 16 feet or just over 16 feet. Then it increases to 25 feet and six inches. So that's the front elevation. Here's the rear elevation. Here's the interior side elevation. And then here's the exterior, exterior side elevation. So that's the one again, along Santa Teresa Way. I'm just a quick look at the materials that are being used. The roofing is, will stay the same as it is existing in the first story, which is asphalt. It would be stucco that's proposed for, for for the house as well, but, but it would be a bit of a different color existing. It's a, it's a light blue. Now it's going to be this, this kind of clearer color. And it does feature, even though there's a chimney that's existing on the, on the single-family home that's being proposed to be demolished, they do have a stone feature, stone veneer feature that's along the first, first story of the house. We did receive neighborhood response. The applicant sent the neighbor consultation forms to all adjacent homeowners and all five neighbors returned the forms in support of the proposed project. In order to grant a design review permit, the planning commission, we need to find, we need to make the following findings under section 10.052500 of the city planning code or zoning code. And these read the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the neighbor, with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighbor, neighboring views from principal rooms of the residence. And number four, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious and safe development in the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. As detailed in our staff report, we believe these findings are being met by the proposed project. And with that said, the staff is recommending that the planning commission consider adopting a resolution approving the design review permit to allow first story addition and remodel and the construction of a new second story to an existing single-story residence at 604 Santa Teresa Way, subject to the following, or to the attached, I should say, conditions of approval. With that said, staff is available for questions and the applicant and homeowner are joining us here tonight as well.
Thank you very much. Let me get out of the, is there someone that would like to ask question? One of the commissioners for the planner at this point? I, for some reason or other, I am not on the right screen, so I'm, I'm only seeing the shared screen. Here we are.
Sorry, but there we go.
Thank you, I thought, okay. Do I see one of the commissioners that have any questions of staff? I'm not seeing.
Commissioner Quigg?
I see you, Mr. Commissioner Wong, please.
So question for staff. Seems pretty clear, but just confirming that there are no variances requested. Everything's conforming to city code. Is that correct?
But, yeah, no, no variances requested. There is the portion on the first story that's non-conforming existing, but they're not proposing any to extend that non-conformity or any work is being done to, to that section of the house. So no variances and no, no special permits or anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Saying none, is the applicant available to present the project?
Yes, hi, my name is Joe Sable from Arrow 11 Design. I want to thank all the commission members and the chair for all their time and effort on reviewing our project. for all their time and effort on reviewing our project. Very excited to be here, and I wanted to also extend out a thank you to Nestor for working with us throughout the process. I just wanted to make a couple of comments very briefly that the main goal of the project for the owners was to get a little additional space for their growing family. And we wanted to be very cognizant of the neighborhood and wanted to work with some traditional roof forms and some traditional massing to kind of integrate with the surroundings and the surrounding structures in the immediate vicinity. And wanted to really articulate the massing of the second floor to really bring it in and kind of break up those massings on the second floor. That would be most visible to the immediate neighbors. And we, working with Nestor, we resolved the finishes, the surface materials, and the stone and the stucco and the coloring palette, I think we're very excited about. And I'm also wanting to let you guys know that I'm here to answer any other questions that you might have for me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. Is, do we have any questions? Mr. Sable? Commissioner Wong?
So, question for Mr. Sable. The plot appears to have a lot more frontage than rear square footage, and I noticed that there's a patio in the front of the house with sliding door. Just curious about how you envision, or how does the family envision that space being used? And I noticed on the rendering that there's a kind of hedges around the property that may create some more privacy, but just confirming that you're not, that this is not a fenced-in front yard and there's no intention to have it completely fenced and sort of make it a very private patio?
Um, yes, I think, I think the goal was that they wanted to kind of capitalize on what I would consider the backyard quote-unquote is really their front yard. So, part of the kind of overall design was to utilize kind of that big grass area for for the owners. And yes, we are proposing a kind of a hedge to kind of contain the edge of that between the sidewalk and their property. But the goal is to kind of use that hedge line to kind of define that front area and then to utilize that small hardscape for a table and chairs, but otherwise keep it very open.
I have a question. Because it is on a corner as it is, where is the front and where are the height limits of the fences? It looks like the high fence is between, is on Santa Teresa. So, around the turn, how high can it go on those hedges or whatever it wants to go? It's only 24, isn't it? Nestor?
So, sorry, I've got it. So, check with this front would be that, that part of the corner where Park Boulevard basically is, would be the front of the house or the front yard. And in terms of the heights, let me just double-check for you real quick, if you don't mind.
I think that's only 24.
I believe it's two and a half feet if I'm not mistaken, mistaken.
Yeah, 30 inches.
Yeah.
Not to interrupt, but we're not proposing to change the existing fence that's there. We're just for the additional hedge planting is part of the proposal.
Okay. Yeah, I drive by there, so.
Okay.
To the neighborhood, Mr. Wong. Okay. Okay, and do we have a a blow-up of, I mean, it looks very nice. The rock. The rock that you have on the house.
I think Nestor had it on the material board page.
We just share the screen real quick here again.
Thank you, Nestor.
Where is it?
It's
Oh, I think I might.
I think it's slide number 19, it looks like.
Are you seen it there?
The lower right-hand card.
Oh, there it is. Yes, okay. I saw the three pictures. And it's, I'm going to tell you, I think that the finished result is going to be on page A7. Are the windows going to look this color off-look?
Um, that's just kind of, it's not going to read as that color. I just wanted to create kind of a contrast for the stucco, but no, it's going to read as regular glass. There's no proposal for a heavy tint in that color, no.
Okay. And maybe the next time this green doesn't look like a regular green, so.
Yes, yeah, that's a great, that's a great comment. Thank you for that.
It kind of detracts from the house, you know, it's like those pictures, so.
I agree. I think it makes it maybe a little too artificial, if you will.
Yes, for me anyway.
No, I think that's a good comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant?
So, I still am curious about the side of the house on Park Boulevard. It shows very large windows on either side of the existing chimney. And I can understand that they'd want privacy for those large windows, not to have people walking by or people in the school looking, appearing in the windows. So, it would really benefit this plan to really see landscape or what the intent of the landscape plan is. I imagine that they want to put in some trees to kind of include some privacy. And then the hedges just seem very low. So, I mean, the options that ultimately the owner may want is either some trees or a fence. And I'm just wondering if, and if they did add that fence, would there need to be any additional approvals or not?
Did did we get a landscaping plan?
Because it's very nice, very nice architecture. And it's really, it seems really, really beneficial for the neighborhood. I'd just hate to see later on they decide, oh, I want a big giant fence in front of the whole, along Park Boulevard and then.
I think that's a fair comment. I think, I think one of the, to speak on the owner's behalf a little bit on that, I think the goal was, you know, part of the first-floor renovation is kind of create the traditional great-room experience and to try to get as much light and air into that, you know, downstairs center corridor there. So, I think, you know, the windows serve as two purposes. One, to let light and air and also into the space and also kind of just gives much, and captures as much view out. And I think, I think to be fair, I think, I think one of the goals is to live in the house, inhabit it, and see if there indeed any privacy issues come up. I don't think they anticipate it right now. But I think we'd rather have it more open and light admitting first before committing to any kind of fence structure or anything. So, that's why we're proposing just a hedge to define kind of the foot traffic around the space and just see what happens at a later date.
It doesn't show in the drawings here, but are there large trees I didn't walk by this property?
No, no, there's no, there's just a small, yeah, there's just a small fruit tree on the front. Just no privacy screening or anything like that.
And was there any other additional landscape plan that they considered or that you put together?
No, it was to keep it open and just kind of a minimal, minimal landscape plan. Just a small, the hardscape patio, the rest is bark chips and the hedge at this point.
I'd really encourage you to work with the owner to develop that planting plan so that covers their basis and doesn't behoove them to feel like they have to put a big fence in later on for privacy.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that. I'll definitely speak to them about that. Thank you.
They're not going to be able to put a great big fence up, so.
That's the side yard, right? So, conceivably, they could put a fence along all Park Boulevard, no?
No.
The other way around, I think.
That's correct. Park would be the front of, front yard, actually.
That whole thing is going to be the front.
Even though the address is 604 Santa Teresa.
Okay, are there any other questions at this point? Seeing none. Bernadette, is there anyone that wishes to speak on this project? Do you see any?
There are no hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay. Seeing none.
I see.
We will close the public comment period. And we will go to commission discussion. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'd like to just hear from the other commissioners, just their thoughts on this design and pros and cons, if they like it.
Oh, go ahead. I think it's very nice and it'll be, it'll be good. I know it's a little weird configuration for Commissioner Wong is saying, but it's, even the addresses on Santa Teresa because it's the narrower part has to show the front. So, that's why the front technically is park. That's why it's a little bit weird in that sense, but I think overall I like it and I don't have any objections to it at this point. It fits everything, all the requirements, and the neighbors are all good with it, so I'm good to go.
Commissioner Davis?
I agree. It's a lovely design. I'm so happy that all of the neighbors replied. Even if they had not liked it, just having all the neighbors actually respond is a beautiful thing. So, I'm very happy with that, and I'm looking forward to seeing it grow and be a new building.
My only comment, and I think it's wonderful also, but I have some hesitation because I'm very familiar with the corner that I think some trees would soften up that corner and give you a little bit more privacy. I would recommend that you talk to staff. And I'm not going to make it a condition or anything like that. But as, as someone that's lived in the area a long time, as has Commissioner Davis, I think some nice trees would really enhance the property. We have a motion to approve?
That's just one comment, Chair Quigg.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's nicely done. Good to see that they make the extra effort getting more neighbors to agree to it. It goes a long way so that we know that everybody is happy with the design and proper.
Commissioner, you muted yourself.
Yeah, I was going to say, are you?
I didn't know that. I've been talking away and I just.
Well, you started out okay and then it cut.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was just saying that good job in getting all the neighbors to agree to the design of the second-story addition such as this. You know, it goes to show that proper work has been done and proper outreach has been completed and consensus was built among all the neighbors to see this house done. So, good work there. The design is fine. It's good. It fits well within all the guideline, no exception being salt. And the house seems to be quite functional when I looked at the floor plan. I mean, I do believe that bedroom number five is a little small, but it's more than likely to be used as an office. Is that right, Mr. Sable?
Yes, that's correct. An office or potential nursery as well.
Yeah. So, it seems like, you know, the house is well-designed to fit the usage of the property owner. So, I'm perfectly okay with it. So, I will move to motion the approval for 604 Santa Teresa Way for a design review permit to allow for first-story additions and the construction of a new second story to an existing single-family, single-story, single-family residence in a single-family residential R1 district.
Second.
Can we please have vote count?
Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Jill?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Feng?
Hi.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
We have a vote of five to zero to approve.
Just as a reminder to the applicant that there is a 10-day appeal process. Can't get started too quickly, but to just be aware of the 10-day appeal process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the heads up.
Okay, and I look forward to seeing that corner updated as it looks like it will be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's comments and insights.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business this evening? Seeing none. Next item is commission comments.
Are we having a meeting on the 21st, December 25th? If we are, I'm not going to be able to make it.
We intend to cancel that meeting. We don't have any items.
Okay. So, this is our big Christmas event. Yes, Commissioner Davis?
I want to thank Anders for his service to the planning commission and wish him well in the council. Looking forward to working with him on his new role there. Thanks, Anders.
Thank you so much, Marie. Appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wong.
That was going to be under-announced?
Yeah. It felt like a comment.
Oh, well, twice is better than none, right?
And while I'm still here, I also want to let our mics open again, you know, say welcome to Darcy. We're looking forward to working with you as well.
Any other commission comments?
Well, since we're there, I'll say I'll go ahead and say welcome, welcome as well to Darcy and look forward to working with you. You look familiar to me, so I'm not sure if I've seen San Bruno or, I don't know why, but look forward to, it seems like you come very well-experienced and we'll be glad to have you. And I would also like to congratulate Commissioner Feng and look forward to working with you in the, as you as our city council, I guess, member instead. So, we'll, but thank you so much for your time and we've, I've learned a lot from you in terms of planning and designs and things to consider. So, thank you.
I want to comment. One thing I'd appreciate from the staff is that, I believe I saw there was an El Camino Real Initiative or the Grand Boulevard Initiative. And I have to look, I bookmarked it somewhere, but it looked like there was some plans and reviews that they were asking for comments by December 15th. So, I know that the El Camino Real, the Grand Boulevard Development, going right through Milbrae, that's tremendous, going to have a tremendous impact on our city and the makeup of our city, how we do business, how it looks, how people drive through. And so, I think we should really pay attention to that Grand Boulevard Initiative. Is there any upcoming review meetings that staff is aware of about the project? Okay, I know that they've been, you know, making progress. See, it almost seems like they're starting south, going through Palo Alto, Redwood City, working their way up with this whole Camino renovation. And then they've spoken a lot, I know Tom's spoken about that before, about El Camino project. So, just like to put that on the radar. That's a really big project for us. And then if you could even send us links or even outreach to the community, if we do see that there's development plans, just make sure the whole community is aware of it. And even if they can, organizers of that project, if they can hold community meetings within our city and to review the plans, that would be great also. Not necessarily in person, but now I guess it's online. I'll try to look again for that link. If I see that, I'll forward it to staff.
Very well, thank you.
Any other, well, wait a minute. I was going to do the announcement first.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words.
Well, I, I haven't had a chance to congratulate you.
Okay, okay.
So actually, I, I think Russell was going to say a couple of words under announcements. But I might as well chime in with everyone else, but anyway, congratulations. It just seems like the three years has kind of flew by and you've been a great asset to the planning commission. And I know you're going to be a great asset on the city council. So congratulations and we will miss you. And also welcome to Darcy and I do look forward to meeting you in person. I think it'd be nice. I might just come down one day or give you a call and we can wear masks and talk from across outside. You've got some nice benches out there. And the weather's been fairly nice, so. And I think Roscoe had a couple of things to say.
Thank you, Chair Quick. Yeah, so just like I said, I go the commissioners' comments, Chair. Commissioner Feng, it's been a pleasure working with you on the commission. My brief time here, it started about, actually, a year ago on Wednesday. So it's been a pleasure working with you over the past year and I'm sure we'll be working hand in hand on future projects as they go to the city council here in next year. And it's, your insights have been very valuable and so appreciate all your thoughtfulness and on the commission.
Hey, are there any other announcements?
If I may, check with, I didn't say.
Yes, I think you wanted to say something too.
Thank you.
But that's okay. It worked.
Yeah, so first of all, I'd like to thank everyone on this planning commission. I want to welcome Mr. Darcy Smith for joining us. And you came to our department with a wealth of experience in planning and development and just overall been an exceptional leader in the world of city planning. We're very blessed and very happy to have you and you'll be working very well with the team and the entire planning team is in good hand. I'm very glad to see this appointment coming from, you know, especially from someone who is as well established as yourself, Ms. Smith. Thank you so very much. And I, for all practical purposes, this is more than likely to be my very last planning commission meeting with you all as a planning commissioner. And for the last three and a half years, it has been a journey. And I wanted to thank everyone on the council and everyone on the planning commission and all the staff for, you know, just bearing with me for the last three and a half years and an opportunity for me to serve. It's been an exceptionally fruitful experience. It's such an honor to be among, you know, the leaders such as all of you, you know, sitting here today on this commission, a wealth of experience in serving the city, you know, the planning commission, the function of our commission has been exceptionally important to our city in, in every aspect in terms of guiding the future development of our city and all the way down to approving just people's lives every day. And I'm just so honored to have an opportunity to be in this commission and be among, you know, the fellowship with all your commissioners and all your staff. Very grateful, three and a half years. I couldn't ask for anything better to start my public service. And so, you know, with that grateful heart, you know, I'm not going away too far. I'm merely changing my meeting time from, you know, Monday and, you know, every other Monday to every other Tuesday at the same time, 2:00 PM. And I'm pretty sure we will have more opportunity to work together as my future endeavor, you know, and other parts of the city functions. And, you know, we did great work here in the planning commission and I'm so glad to have all of you to be a part of this.
We lost you again.
Did he freeze up? Oh, that's terrible.
I don't know. You think he's down?
I don't think, oh, there he's back. You froze up for the last few moments. There you go.
Okay, yeah, get it off. Did you guys get it off?
Done, yeah.
So.
All right. Yep, so thanks, everyone.
Okay. So now we have to look for a new commissioner, huh? Bernie Depp?
I was just going to say, thank you, Commissioner Feng. It's been a joy and a pleasure. I appreciate you. My only announcement regarding that, being that it's your last meeting, is I was told that we are going to start recruiting on December 14th through the end of January. The position will be posted on social media and the Millbury website. And people will be able to apply online on the city of Millbury website. And that's all I have to say to bring that up to date. And thank you, Commissioner Feng, and good luck to you.
Thank you all. Thanks, everybody, you know, such a heartwarming comment from every one of you. And like I said, I'm not going too far away, just changing my meeting time, so.
Unfortunately, you haven't served long enough to get a, a gold watch.
I, I did not know that the gold watch was in the pipeline. Had I known that, I probably would have reconsidered my campaign.
No gold watch today. And accumulate years.
Not even a city hall hat, maybe a baseball cap or something.
Okay, we could do that.
Happy holidays, everybody.
I was.
Can I ask one more question? One more question. Jean asked, Jean asked about our next meeting in December, but I'm looking at January now, going January 4th, the Monday right after New Year's. Are we really going to meet there? And then the next one's Martin Luther King. Are we moving to Tuesday?
Well, generally, generally that one, well, it depends on how much we have to do. If we have a lot of things we have to get done, we certainly can do the 4th.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's up to whether we have projects or not.
Well, that's.
I was, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Realizing that most offices kind of become skeleton between Christmas and New Year's, doesn't feel like we're probably meeting on the 4th either.
At this time, we, we don't have anything projected to be scheduled for January 4th. So more than likely about 98% will be canceled that as well.
So that being the case, the next meeting would be the Tuesday, not Martin Luther King. It would be on that Tuesday if it happened.
The 19th, yes. And I assume the, the commission is available for that, that meeting date?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we certainly don't have as many vacations planned.
All right.
Yeah, notice every meeting I've gone to, everybody's been there. Okay. Meeting is adjourned with no other comments. If you want, you can steer your hand really quick. Otherwise, it's a Merry Christmas to everyone and a better 2021.
Yes.
Yeah. Much better.
Thank you.
We're all looking forward to seeing each other in person.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Bye bye.
Bye. Thank you, Bernadette.
Thank you, Chair Quick.